We'll begin this again, continue our meeting. Let me give you a little bit of direction on what we'll do. We're going to go through people that have signed up for public comments, understanding that this will happen again. Your opportunity to get up and approve, complain, whatever you want to do to this will take place again at our meeting in October. Okay? Because there's a lot of this stuff that we really don't know yet until we see the plan and see the remake of what Mr. Page works out. Secondly, after that, this will go to the city council, probably the first part of November. And then if there isn't a second meeting in November, which a lot of times there isn't because of Thanksgiving, the one would be, the first one would be first reading, which no action will be taken. The second one will have the same public hearing again, just like you've had here, and your chance to talk to the council, because there's, you know, they go through that process. So there's plenty of opportunity for you to get up and speak at this type of, this type of an event. So, number one, Kathy Stockton. Just get up, your name and where you're from and all that good kind of stuff.
Well, good evening, Planning Commission and Chairman DeVoe. My name's Kathy Stockton. I've lived here in Woodland Park for about 34 years, on the 200 Pine Ridge Avenue, which is in the valley, right behind City Market there. And I'm just here tonight to say when I first saw the idea of a five-story hotel being at Gold Hill Square South, I was alarmed, thinking that it would, you know, be overshadowing our neighborhood. And I did talk to Sally, and I'm very pleased with her recommendations to you this evening. I've never been to a Planning Commission meeting before, and I'm really impressed that there's so many citizens and the applicant is here. I would like to applaud Mr. Page, because where would Woodland Park be without you? I think he's done many positive things for the community. So, I'm not against a hotel, it's just the height and the character keeping it to our small town. And it looks like there's a lot of other people here that are concerned. I just didn't want you to have nobody show up tonight, so, thank you.
A lot of people have followed your lead.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy Converse, did I say that last name right?
Got it.
Okay.
Now, I have gum in my mouth. My name is Tammy Converse. I've lived in Teller County since 1986. Generally, I don't come to these meetings. I live on Red Feather Lane. I, for all of you who have tomatoes in your pockets, put them back. I am not opposed to the hotel. I am opposed to ugly. I think Mr. Page is missing an absolute excellent opportunity to make that area over there look mountain-like, look professional, and probably charge a lot more for the rooms than the other hotels in town. I'm not su, I don't quite understand why he's not using all of those, that entire I, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure he's going to need at least 60 rooms to make a profit on it, and I think he should. I, I don't think those buildings should be left empty. I think they're an eyesore. I really wanted to open a bi, I retired. I really wanted to open a business, and I hate to say this to Mr. Page, but God, that's ugly. It's going to be cleaned up over there. I, I really would like to see a two, a three-story hotel. Nicely done. I think it would fit in with landscaping, and I think it would benefit the town. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Mr. Page thinks so too. You have a friend there. Maude Williams? Is that correct, Maude? And make sure I can read it properly. If you'd like to come up, tell us where you're from.
Hi. My name is Melad Williams, and I live in Divide, Colorado. First visit, oh, okay.
Oh, you can pull that thing towards you a little bit. It'll work. It'll make some noise when you look.
That wasn't exactly what I had in mind.
Pull the silver one.
Silver one, okay.
There you go.
Until I don't get out much, okay.
There you go.
I first visited Colorado in 1982. I got off the bus, and someone looked at Pike's Peak, and I said, "That's where I want to live." I came out on my vacation till I found a job, because I'm self-supporting it. I wouldn't move until I had a job. Okay, so I moved out in '84. I wanted to be here before the first snowfloe, first snowfall. I don't know if any of you were here in '84. We had a big blizzard, October 2nd, Monday, right. And I got snowed in. That's the only time I've ever been snowed in, was the first, I'd been here, came Labor Day weekend in October, we got, and I was down the spring, stuck for three days. Okay. The thing that sold me on Woodland Park, there's a little cowgirl lives inside here. I may have sneakers on, I'd prefer cowboy boots. I had five pairs when I lived out here. I moved to Maryland, and they got moldy when I moved back five years later for a job. All my boots molded in Maryland. Okay, so I always come back to, I was fortunate enough, okay, I'll give you a little bit of history, I'm getting old, so I dwell on history. I've been fortunate to take care of small timers. I talked to a lady who grew up in Divide and went to the one room schoolhouse, she rode a horse there. When I moved here, I had an apartment in Paradise Ranch, Federal Apartments. This is the honest truth. They had a hitching post outside, and one evening, a guy comes up, gets off his horse and goes in the tavern, and comes out of the tavern. Now, I can only guess that he'd lost his driver's license. That's why he rode his horse there. That's the Woodland Park I fell in love with. And when people said, "Why do you want to go there?" And I said, "They have a rodeo in town, in the main street." Well, now we have a mid-end strip. I'm of the old-fashioned belief that if you do good a job, then by merit you get something better or bigger. You prove that you're excellent. I'm sorry, I can tell you, his dreams, your applicant's dreams, are his renters' nightmares. I'll just throw a couple of facts. One is, I don't know how many of you know, Goodwill is no longer a not-for-profit. They are for-profit. And I'm wondering if maybe that influenced the rental situation in approaching him. City Market has the oldest pipes, water pipes. City Market's headquarters are in Cincinnati. They don't understand rural areas, et cetera. They don't know, people can't drive from Wilkerson Pass in to get groceries. So that's a whole other story. But City Market says, "We're going to have this sprinkler system over the veggies." Well, blew the pipes, because the pipes are old. I talked to a lady in my history search. They were founding members of the Saddle Club years ago. She now, I don't know if her husband's still alive or not, she volunteers at the Historical Society out in Florissant. She told me they owned the first grocery store, and then they moved into Paige's building. That's how old history, that's where that all goes back to. I can remember Divide, when Venture Food wasn't there, there was a little, they used to do butchering, and they sold deli stuff. So, when I first moved here, and I thought, "What in the world is with this local, I'm a local, I'm a native, I'm a semi-native, and I'm going, what, that dude is this?" But I'd lived enough to see stoplight after stoplight after stoplight. I didn't know I was paying food tax in Woodland Park until Walmart was going to come in. And all of a sudden, it was, holy cow, Woodland Park is one of the few cities in the, in the state that collects food tax. I didn't know that until then.
Eighty percent of all the communities in the state of Colorado charge taxes on food. Eighty percent.
Okay. I had no idea how that number was, okay. But that came to light only when Walmart, it was made public or whatever, it made, I wasn't aware of it, I read my receipts, I guess, but anyway. So, obviously, the days of the rodeo are gone, but I don't think anybody should be made, have his dreams come true at the, at the expense of his renters. And obviously, not a whole lot of people real happy, or they wouldn't keep moving out. I've been told that the electricity at that sandwich shop was turned off, and they lost everything. Everything in their food freezers was gone because their electricity was turned off. Letting, like, boom. And so they lost all that. I know City Market's pipes have exploded because the building is so old, and there's not any place they can expand. And when this smell stuff was going on, I said, "You know, if you're in an apartment, you put the money," I'd read about this, I had never gone through this. Fortunately, I own two acres in Divide, and I wouldn't give it up for the world. But I've been told that renters, if you don't like your landlord, and the way he's doing things, or he's causing you trouble, or he's not responding to your needs for building upgrade, et cetera, that you put the money in escrow, so to speak, and I don't know legal terms, but you set it aside, and you say to the landlord, "Hey, I'm not paying rent until this is fixed." Well, recently, City Market had this stench. I was told it was from a yeast thing from next door. I didn't know what was next door. I just know it stunk to high heaven. Okay, today, well, last Friday, I came in town, came into town, and I got stuck at a stoplight by McDonald's, and at that point, the traffic was bumper to bumper, not moving. It turned out, I guess it was a malfunction with that stoplight. It was bumper to bumper, way past the high school on Rampart Range, and they just sat there for a long time. A policeman drove by, and I don't know if he was going to report the malfunction or whatever, but anyway. So much for "Don't come into Fri, don't come into town Friday." So, okay, learned my lesson last week, forgot, got in here in this mess. So I said to myself this morning, "Make sure you go in Thursday to town, because Friday is a real nightmare." And I drive into City Market, and we're do, we're doing the pavement. We close off this section. There's no parking places. The place is a mess. This happened a while back. Why couldn't they do the paving done at night? I mean, in the summertime, hey, it's light until nine o'clock or so. Repave it after most of the stores are closed, then we repave it. You don't tie up traffic in the middle of the day. Now, tomorrow's going to be the real test, because we've got this farmer's market. So, it'll be interesting to see if the crew continues to do repaving or whatever it is, and it was only a year ago that they repaved that, so it must not be too good a job done. But anyway, they're repaving it today. It, well, we'll ask to raise a hand, but maybe some of you experienced the mess in City Market today. It was an absolute zoo. Try to, even if you pull in and say, "Oh, my goodness, there's no parking places," you turn around and you leave.
You need to get back on task.
So it was a mess at the parking lot. So I'm saying, management isn't doing a very good job as far as convenience goes. They're tying up the pu, I mean, you pave at night when there's nobody else around, but no, we're doing it in the daytime. So the real test will be tomorrow, when the farmer's market's there, and we've got all this traffic, and if the crew is busy tomorrow in City Market. And that's all I have to say, except I really miss the rodeo, and I'm glad you guys are hoping, and I think that people should be rewarded by the good job they do.
Thank you.
And if you don't do good, hey, let's not reward them with more money. Thank you.
Well, Saddle Club has just paved that intersection in Divide, and you'll have a rodeo in Divide, so you'll get your wish back for that. Okay, anybody else that didn't sign up, do you want to come up and make a comment? Okay.
I will. I'm going in the first hole, please. Mine's real short.
We're addressing a hotel subject, okay? Okay, your name worked.
My name's Terri, and I have worked for Best Western.
Please, full name and your address.
Oh, Terri Bitzel, at 404 County Road 21.
Thank you.
And I have worked for Best Western, and I disagree with two things. Sixty percent of occupancy is not good. Secondly, I think the traffic going in and out of there is going to be much worse than what you say it is or the study says, because that's based on those shops being full, but what about all the other shops that are full? I mean, that's not included in that study. That, that light is a nightmare. And the easement going behind is not a good access for anybody to drive back and forth, because it goes behind all those shops, and it's ugly and it's scary at night.
Okay. Although, I saw another hand up. Your name, address, and all that good stuff.
My name is Brian Coches. I've been a resident of Woodland Park for more than 15 years. I'm a local business owner, and I'm also the co-founder of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, though these comments tonight are my own. Those of us who have traveled extensively around our great state know that Woodland Park is arguably one of the most beautiful mountain towns in Colorado, possessing one of the greatest mountain views in the western United States. It has long shaped our identity as a community. It is on our logos, our signs, our business cards and stationery. It affects how we position our homes, businesses, and public spaces. People stop in our community to take it in. And if you have not taken the time to stop and take a good look recently, please do, for it is an awe-inspiring view, and I'm afraid that we take it for granted. It would be an absolute shame to squander it, and it is a feature that Woodland Park cannot afford to lose. Now, obviously, the best way to do this is not through government mandate, but rather by encouraging developers to build their structures, that, to build structures that complement our community, not dominate or take away from the beauty. This project is currently designed, does not complement the existing community, and definitely takes away from the beauty. It is for this reason especially that I oppose development of this five-story Best Western Hotel as currently planned, and going forward, I encourage both the Planning Commission and City Council to take protection of our view shed seriously by establishing reasonable limits on scale for future projects such as this. It is my understanding, as we know now, that Mr. Bill Page has agreed to a redesign, and I applaud his efforts and thank him for working with the community. I would hope that whatever he develops is a much better fit, and I would also encourage him to work with the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District and take their concerns to heart. There is a legitimate question as to whether or not Netco even has the equipment to handle emergencies at a structure this size, and as this project is to be a part of the DDA, it will limit the tax revenue Netco gets from this. And as I understand, they also encourage a no vote. As we have already seen with Karas, the fire district is already spread thin. The Planning Commission and City Council ought to approve large projects going forward. They must also find ways to fund our emergency services so that they have the resources necessary to protect our community. In conclusion, I would just say that I don't think there's anybody up here who lives in Woodland Park because we wanted to live on Powers Boulevard. And what I'm hearing in terms of hotels is Castle Rock and Colorado Springs. As I mentioned to somebody else, Estes Park, good fit, good comparison to Woodland Park. Best Western, three-story hotel. Evergreen, three-story hotels. Durango, Best Western is a three-story hotel. We have a five-story hotel proposed here, and again, it's going to be redesigned, but I, I just don't want us to take for granted the amazing view and feel that this town has. This is what people come for. We don't have skiing here. We don't have a lot of the other amenities that other mountain towns may have, but we have one hell of a spectacular view. And I would encourage Planning Commission and Council, and again, and the developer, to, let's find a way to build hotels that really complement the skyline of Woodland Park. Thank you.
If not, I'll close the public hearing.
Excuse me, Mr. DeVoe. I did receive an email from a citizen who wanted me to read their email into the record.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. This is from Mr. Steve Jerslow. "I think the concept of," and it's quite long, "I think the concept of having a Best Western or other national chain motel in Woodland Park is good and long-sought-after idea, particularly with the influx of so many periodic visitors to the Karas Bible College, a phenomenon that is likely to increase over the next several years. I don't think the Country Lodge, which I know is expanding, and the Eagle Fire Lodge combined, will be able to handle the increased demand on our limited hospitality resources. Other facilities, such as bed and breakfast lodges and campsites, don't have the broad appeal as a standard motel room, in my judgment. In addition, I believe having a resident national chain motel will improve our chances of becoming an overnight destination, location for tourists, even those from other parts of Colorado. The additional tax revenues that such a project will presumably generate is another obvious plus for our city. However, I think a five-story building would be inappropriate for our town, at least in such a central location as Gold Hill Square South. In my opinion, such a tall building at a critical location in downtown could destroy the ambiance of our small mountain town and will affect the Pike's Peak view of many residents and businesses. Perhaps in a different location, such as up against Rampart Range, such a height might be somewhat less conspicuous, conspicuous, or, and obtrusive. I don't believe that other mountain communities, such as Fair Play, Salida, and Buena Vista, have any lodging structures of that height, probably some for other reasons. Second, although I'm not a traffic engineer or urban planner, I don't believe there currently is adequate parking or sufficient ingress egress for an 80-room motel in that location, from both a practical and fire protection standpoint. Substantially, additional infrastructure would have to be constructed to accommodate the increased traffic burden, congestion, and parking spaces that such a facility would likely require. That concern could be partially addressed by suggesting or requiring Mr. Page or any other developer to include cover above or below-ground parking as part of the motel complex, which is generally a good idea in any event, considering our long snowy winters. Third, I would encourage the developer to include studio apartments or kitchen suites in his planning for such a facility at reasonable weekly or monthly rates, to help accommodate the increased needs of students at Bible, the Bible college, since we have a shortage of affordable housing rentals in particular here in Woodland Park, which, again, will only likely become exasperated in the years ahead. Lastly, I would also encourage the developer to include a conference center in the motel complex design, which would likely entice to host conferences, seminars, offsites there, again, increasing visitors. I hope this input helps you, the Planning Commission, and the City Council, and the planning, the approval process for this proposed development. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. That was Steve Jerslow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, now, I'll close the public hearing.
Yes.
Comment. I would, I would look for discussion and a recommendation about extending this to October 22nd as a recommendation that came from our planning.
I had some concerns, some questions for Mr. Page, but he answered them quite a bit when he discussed the design process and how we got to where it is now, and how that it's not a final solution. So, most of those questions that have been answered are not relevant now that you're going back to the design process.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm a hard of hearing. Could I move a little closer to?
Me too.
Huh?
No, go ahead. Hold the mic close.
By saying that, I had a number of questions from looking at the review pack, the package information, a lot of it regarding the building itself, but I'm understanding that you're preliminary in that process, and will be looking at it in more detail and making some revisions. There's a couple minor questions.
Okay.
And going to the conference center. Is there, are there meeting rooms anticipated to be in the building?
The marketing report I ordered recommended one meeting room.
What type of size was that?
It's about 12 by, maybe 25 or 28.
So, thirty people, something like that.
But then the lobby, the way it's, would be laid out, would have some other open space around it, and I like the breakfast area with the, you know, it's flexible space or multi-use type. But you could have one 12 by 28 room for a private.
My particular concern was in regards to a meeting or conference room in regards to the traffic study. I think the traffic study was addressing the hotel rooms, but if there was a separate function in a meeting room, for what you're describing, it's not a substantial size, and so the traffic would be not as light as it could be.
I don't think a meeting room will be used. I got to get some water. I don't think the meeting room is going to be used for, like, community functions or so on.
And that's basically the question.
It's going to be just for hotel guests. Now, I've looked at other hotels that are building new hotels, and they got, like, four or five meeting rooms, and, you know, but they're in bigger metropolitan areas.
Okay, thank you on that. The other issue is, I know the city's trying to encourage pedestrian use across the city, people walking the streets, to go to different restaurants, shops and that. And I've walked to a number of stores in your development, and I would encourage some further pedestrian amenities to be added to get from Highway 24 to the shops, because right now, my path of travel is always through the parking lot dodging cars. So, just a comment on that.
I agree with you.
Okay. So I'd like to see that addressed in your proposal. Okay. I think that's all I have for you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Sally, have we heard from the fire district?
In your packet was their letter.
Yep.
And they requested that there be the fire flow test, and that they'll be able to review the construction drawings at the appropriate time. They did recommend disapproval, but that is basically based upon the DDA retaining the tax increment financing, and that is a standard condition that they have placed on any new development in the DDA. However, it's not a land use criteria with which you base your judgment on.
One of the things that they'll probably do is by changing the size, they'll reevaluate the fire, the fire needs and whatever's involved with that, taking a floor off of it and going to less rooms, and they'll probably have to reevaluate that anyway, which we'll talk about on the 22nd.
That's all.
Mr. Page, does the 22nd give you enough time to come back with a, you know, a substantial proposition?
Well, if it doesn't, I'll be asking for an extension.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, I'd sure like somebody to.
I move that we continue the public hearing on this application until October 22nd, 2015.
I'll second.
Well, I'd like to make some comments before we go for the vote on this issue.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, everybody'd like to get home, but I do have some concerns. We're saying to change the massing, the size and the height of the building without giving any distinct guidelines. I'm just concerned we're going to come back on the 22nd, and we're going to ask for another continuance to whatever next date is.
It is possible.
So, I'd like some discussion, see what the Planning Commission feels about the height. What's a reasonable height limit? Should we put a height limitation on the project?
I don't think we should provide that level of specificity at this point. I think between the commentary from the city staff, the commentary from folks who spoke up, Mr. Page's own openness to that, I personally believe the next step is his, and that he should, and he's been working in concert with the city staff. It's been iterative to a certain point. And I believe that we should kind of wait and see and not impose really strict guidelines at this point.
Any other comments?
Is there any, or, what is the tallest business in our town?
I would say probably a 40-foot limit at this point in the downtown area. However, we do have taller buildings. The school district has some taller buildings, although they're not subject to our zoning regulations. regulations. Karis Bible College has a fifty-eight foot, I believe they're also up close to sixty feet, but different context, totally different use. They're on a hundred and some odd acres, so...
What is the height limitation for a central business district?
Central business district is thirty-five feet, measured at mean grade. And there have been some variances. I mentioned the Woodland Professional Building that received a variance for a forty-foot roof. The new Trail Ridge Apartments are at forty feet.
Anybody else have any input? If not, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Would you call the question?
Excuse me, may I clarify? The motion, as I heard it verbally, was to just delay.
I am V. on page fifteen.
Yes, but you want to recommend that the applicant redesign the structure, the verbiage that I went through.
Would you like me to read that?
Please.
Okay. Okay, move to continue the public hearing to October 22nd, 2015, and recommend that the applicant redesign the structure by reducing the height of the structure, create a more attractive roof design, and three-hundred-and-sixty-degree facade to more acceptable scale, and add architectural enhancements based upon the finding in the staff report and evidence provided during the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's good.
And the second agrees.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, beginning with Mr. Jeff Watson.
Agree.
Mr. Ken Hartsfield.
Without providing further direction to Mr. Page, I oppose.
Ms. Pat Hislop.
Hislop.
Hislop, sorry.
I agree.
Yeah, we're going to struggle with that name for a while.
I can tell you what I tell the elementary students in my sub. It's hiss like a snake, fly like a lot-beared rabbit, has nothing to do with feeding pigs.
Marty Probst.
I agree.
Peter Scanlon.
Agreed.
And Steve Stannard.
Yes.
And finally, John Devoe.
Agreed.
Motion passes.
Okay. From that, we shall move on to...
Thank you, everyone, for being here, and we will repost the property, and feel free to contact the Planning Department, so that we can let you know if we truly do have submittals.
Before you all scoot, remember, circle the 22nd on your calendar, because you'll get, and we'll have plenty of stuff to talk about. We've got a study in the new plan, what's going to be on the agenda. We'll be posted that during that week. You can get further information from the Planning Department if you need, and you come back and give them and ask more questions. We appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to move on to Chairman's Report, and the Chairman's Report is going to be Peter Scanlon and Pat, yes, to talk about Woodland.
We need some background on you.
Oh.
Welcome you. No, ladies before that. Sorry.
My name is Pat Hislop, and I moved here about two years ago. My husband retired from the Army, and he, when stationed in Fort Carson, he would come up through here to go fishing, and fell in love with how friendly the town was and the view, and that we were actually in the mountains. So, he convinced me, well, this was our compromise. He wanted to go to the wilds of Montana. I said, "I wanted more civilization." And so, he taught me into moving here, and I can't tell you how much I am so grateful that he did. I love this town, and one of my dreams or wishes was when I finally got to put down some roots, that I could become part of a small town and help make it be the best town it could be. And that's, I'm having a lot of fun doing that with Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, I'm in the Design Committee with Main Street, I'm also in Quanis, I work with the Pet Pantry. I think that covers most of my volunteering.
Thank you. Peter Scanlon, two years in Woodland Park. We built a home in 2012, 2013, over on Sunny Glen. Pat and I are neighbors. Before that, I was fourteen years in Des Moines, Iowa, lots of mountains there, and before that, in Hartford, Connecticut. I was a senior executive in the life insurance business. My education is, I have the normal BA, MA, and I also have a law degree from UConn, though I never practiced law, but it comes in handy from time to time. Community involvements, since I've been here, on the Woodland Park Charter Review Committee. I'm a board member of the Pike's Peak Habitat for Humanity. I volunteer at the El Paso County DA's office in a mediation group, and I mentor a refugee young man down in the springs through Lutheran Family Services. So, there's lots to do here. I'm retired, and was really honored to be asked to be on this committee. So, thank you.
Just too young to be retired.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It happens to some of us.
Any reports from anybody else on the commission? Any comments? Nothing for the good of the order? Okay. Madam Director?
I only wanted to let everyone know, we do not have any cases for September 10th, so you have a Thursday night off, and welcome Pat and Peter to the Planning Commission.
Is our next meeting October 22nd, or?
No, it's possible that we'll meet on October 24th, I mean, September 24th.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything else? Bill, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Good luck. We need rooms. We had two thousand people here two weeks ago from the college, and we have ninety-six rooms.
Wow.
And they all stayed down in Springs, or headed place else, so. Excellent. Motion, sir?
Motion, second.
We're hearing.
Thank you.